There it is. It's great. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our meeting for the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners on June 22, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public worship stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have citizen input. I don't see any blue forms for the room today, but we do have several letters from our community. One is in regards to the Terrebonne Rezone. It's from Robin Vora. Thank you for that letter. Robin, we have all read that. And then we have two letters from the community from Lee Graf and Derek Loeb regarding Royal Park and opposing the destruction of our park. So I thank you for those, too. Any other comments? Okay.
So, I mean, the destruction of the park, I mean, that's not the plan. The plan is to, you know, commit to the appropriate number of parking spaces and possibly redevelop the park. I wouldn't call it destruction, just clarifying some words. And I know people's opinions are that, but, you know, I want the community to be involved, be engaged. The idea is to have an architectural view of what could be developed out there, just to add a few parking spots.
Okay.
It's a shame when we say destruction.
Well, you know what? Maybe that is a word I used because, you know, it's something that's been here for, what, 75,000 years? So, and as someone who appreciates my view out the window. We do have a consent agenda, and I need, I want to pull item number five. I had a question with it, and I don't believe that research has been done yet. So if we could pull that for another meeting?
Sure.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion then?
Move approval of the consent agenda minus item number five.
And I will second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Monsieur Devone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay. First thing on our agenda is a public hearing.
Morning, Commissioners. This is time for a public hearing on an order to consider an annexation into the Redmond Fire and Rescue District. You've had a number of these of late. They're rather direct. Blake Hankins has filed a petition to annex property into the district. The district has approved the partition. That's in your packet. The assessor's office and the clerk's office have certified the petition, and community development has reviewed it for consistency with the county's comp plan. So staff would be asking you to, at this time, open a public hearing, receive any public input, close the public hearing, and consider approval of Order 2022-028.
Okay, let's open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone in the room that wants to address the annexation to the Redmond Fire and Rescue District? Are there any raised hands on Zoom, Ryan? We're seeing none? Okay. Any comments that we need to make, or can, may I close the public hearing then? Okay, I believe I may close the public hearing. See, that, documents have all been attached. It's regarding Blake Hankins' annexation of property. So are there any other discussions from the other Commissioners?
Just acknowledging, this is a request by a property owner to be involved and, you know, covered by the Redmond Fire and Rescue District. So this is usually a pretty positive situation. So with that, I'll move approval of Order Number 2022-028.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes for Order Number 2022-028 approving annexation into Redmond Fire and Rescue District for Blake Hankins.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. So, next item on our agenda is a declaration of Amateur Radio Week. It looks like we may have Nathan Garabee in attendance on Zoom. There he is.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us today. Each year, the Board considers, or at least in the last several years, the Board's considered a proclamation declaring this week Amateur Radio Week and highlighting the field day that a number of the amateur radio community takes part in on this coming Saturday. And there's actually two events, one in Sisters and one in Lapine. And just wanted to highlight the involvement and the participation that amateur radio volunteers do in service to the country, the state, and our county. And so it's a pleasure to bring the proclamation before you.
Thank you, Nathan. I know, I remember hearing that Lapine has a big event. Sisters has one, too?
Yeah, I can pull up the, I think Sisters is at Creekside Park, and then the Lapine event is east of 97 in Vanderover. They have a field day, or a field day will be set up out there. And so there's two opportunities. I think the times are generally midday. I want to say Sisters event goes into the evening, and the Lapine event is kind of middle of the day to late afternoon.
Okay. How many people actually do amateur radio across our country, then? Do you have any?
I don't have those numbers. Certainly looked that up for you. There's a pretty large contingent throughout the nation, actually throughout the world. But in Deschutes County, I'd say we have about 30 volunteers that actively work to support Deschutes County preparedness and emergency efforts. And fortunately, it's, they're not, their amateur radio skills aren't something we need all the time, but we're really fortunate that they have the skills and the capabilities to support us when we do.
Great. Thank you for that. Do we, do we need a motion in order to read the proclamation?
Historically do, yes.
Yes, okay. So is there a motion?
You read it first, and then you move adoption of it.
Oh, read it first?
What you've done in the past.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, let's see. Commissioner Devone, do you want to take the first four, and then Commissioner Chang, you want to take the next four, and then I'll do the last ones?
Sure. So before the Board of Commissioners of Deschutes County, Oregon, proclamation declaring Amateur Radio Week of June 20th to 26, 2022, whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of human voice broadcast over the airways, whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, countries by creating friendships and sharing ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators also have approved countless hours of community services, both in emergencies and other local organizations throughout these decades, and whereas the amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated.
And whereas the County of Deschutes recognizes the services amateur radio operators also provide to the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Program and to our many, many civilian emergency response organizations, including the American Red Cross, and whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local events such as bicycle events and marathons where no other communications are available, and participate in disaster preparedness presentations throughout the county, and whereas the County of Deschutes recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarned Program of the U.S. Government Weather Bureau, and whereas the American Radio Relay League, ARRL, is the leading organization for amateur radio in the USA.
Whereas the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day exercises will take place on June 20th to the 26, 2000, and, ooh, that's, those dates aren't right. We didn't update those dates. Those are from 2012. Okay, well, that's good. Let's say the dates of June 20th to the 26, 2022, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of radio amateurs' skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Deschutes, do hereby recognize and designate June 20th to the 22nd, 2022, as Amateur Radio Week in Deschutes County, and it's dated this 22nd day of June 2022 by the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. So could we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Devone?
So, yeah, as a recent and current ham operator with the credentials KK7EYI, so I'm involved with the ham operators. The field day is a 24-hour period where people just practice connecting between states and even around the world and the country. And there's three, three events this weekend. So the Southern Deschutes County is CoRec, they call them, and I don't know the acronym offhand, but Hi-Darg, High Desert Amateur Radio Group, and also a DX group for distance, so the long-distance communication group. They're going to be at Virginia Meisner Park. So there's going to be three of them. And also, it's real interesting when you get to the technology, which is right in my wheelhouse. You can either be communicating point-to-point between two radios or through a repeater system, which we have on some of the buttes around central Oregon, so people can be communicating. And it is a very basic communication style of, you know, speaking and then standing by, waiting for a response, very different than our new digital communication. But it will work, you know, battery-operated, power-out, emergency situation. So it's just a mode that people would rely on if there's bad things happening. It's just great technology and understanding how to, how to be able to have a backup, a Plan B for communications during, you know, emergencies. But also, just like the pole paddle paddle, people are, you know, at different locations, coming down the mountain, you know, supporting if there's somebody having trouble during the competitions also. So it's a 24-hour period coming up this Saturday. All three locations will be communicating with people around the, around the country mostly. So I'm looking forward to it, and I'm glad we're supporting this.
Okay. I'm asking for your vote.
I vote yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, thank you, Nathan. Thank you. And, like, Nathan, would this come into use if, let's say, we have the Cascadia? Is this something that's going to take the pressure off the system? Because normally, I remember when we had major earthquakes in California, the, the phone systems all go down because it's such an overload. So is this, is this where we're going to really hope is active and plentiful?
Yeah, I think the Cascadia scenario is certainly kind of one of the worst-case scenarios where amateur radio could certainly help us communicate, like Emergency Operations Center to Emergency Operations Center, or tie in fire stations and local communities, but then also be able to support communication to, to the state and the federal government to be, be able to relay information and resource requests. And then I just, I did want to also highlight the Skywarn capability that a number of hams do eat, particularly in the summertime with thunderstorms. They're storm spotters, and they're relaying that information on a net to the National Weather Service. That's a really a great service that they also provide, particularly here in central Oregon, because our weather radar is, is not as strong as other parts of the country. So we, we have a pretty weak radar signature for, or radar capability for weather. So those storm spotters are incredibly important.
Nathan, is that a federal effort that's lacking, then, you're saying? Our radar? I mean, who do we need to ask to improve that?
You know, there's been some different pushes over the years to increase our weather, or our Doppler radar coverage. One of the bigger issues is that we're kind of in the middle between Portland, Medford, and Pendleton. And so the way the radar, by the time it hits central Oregon, the, the lower bands of that radar is so high in altitude that it only really catches the highest levels of storms. So some storms can kind of sneak under that radar. So they, they, they have some tricks that they use to kind of compensate for that. But that would be probably a federal, I would say, a federal ask for funding to support additional weather radar, or some sort of public-private partnership potentially.
Thank you for that.
There's really two modes, you know, the clubs knowing how to use the technology, communicate amongst themselves. But if it really goes into an emergency situation, Nathan's the point person, as the emergency manager from the sheriff's office, to really define the needs of communication. People will go to stations and really just relay information during an event, too. So there's kind of two modes for the operations.
Great. Well, thank you for that, that information today. And let's hope that they have a great weekend celebrating and, and improving their efficiencies.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great rest of your day.
No, thank you, Nathan. Don't forget, what is it, August 14th? Isn't that your wife's birthday or something? Yes. Plan, plan ahead, right?
Gosh, you have a great memory.
Amazing.
Well, I just know that you have to be so busy that you should, like, celebrate a month early and then, you know, just in case, right? Anyhow.
I like how you think. Thank you.
Okay, well, tell her happy birthday early from me.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Okay, item number 13, the plan ordinance, and I believe Kyle, would you like to present this for us?
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. I am here today to discuss adoption of two ordinances. These are associated with the comprehensive plan amendment change, as well as a zoning change for a piece of property on the eastern boundary of the city of Bend. Ultimately, this property is going to be associated with an affordable housing pilot project that was originally slated as a part of House Bill 4079. This is one of two projects that were approved in Deschutes County, these two proposals. As I stated in our meeting last week, the comprehensive plan change and the zoning change on the county's half is actually only one portion of this project. The other portion is an expansion of the city of Bend's urban growth boundary. The Bend City Council held a hearing on that matter last Wednesday and approved it unanimously. And so they're still moving forward with a proposed second reading of that UGB expansion ordinance on July 20th, which would make everything fully formal and approved by August 19th. Both of the ordinances I prepared for you today have listed August 19th effective date. And so I would propose adoption by emergency so that both the city's ordinances and the county's ordinances align and are effective on the same day. But with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate if we can approve it by emergency so we coordinate with the city. You know, getting this project closer to, what is the word, manufacturing it? I mean, actually building houses so that we, we can, you know, see a difference. That would be great.
And I support that also today.
So Kyle, there has not been any opposition voiced during the hearings or prior to, and I'm, I'm very supportive of the project. I'm just curious about whether there, there has been any, any friction in the community at all about this project.
I wouldn't say there was any direct opposition. So there were a number of community members, primarily residents in the city of Bend, that showed up to the hearings officer hearing. Just to kind of refresh the Commissioners here, we held a co-public hearing with the city of Bend on the same date for both the county side and the city side of things. And during that hearing, a number of community members did show up. They had specific concerns around traffic, screening of the development from existing residential structures on the western side, which is the city of Bend, general questions within that nature, not a lot of, like I said, direct opposition, mostly just wanting a further clarification of what the project was going to look like. Both the hearings officer, as well as the applicant, ultimately pointed out that all the actual design characteristics, the site plan, the specifics of the physical development are ultimately hashed out according to the city of Bend's code. And that's where kind of the nitty-gritty and the rubber meets the road comes into place. So at this point in time, they didn't have a final plan that they were submitting for and saying this is what it was going to look like, other than a general idea for the number of units it was going to hold, that kind of thing, and some specifics on access points off of Highway 20, which is the, the primary access to the property in this case.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is this second reading or first reading from our?
It should be first and second reading.
First and second. Got it. Yep, okay.
All right. We have a, a motion for the first ordinance then?
I move adoption by emergency of ordinance number 2022-006 and ordinance 2022-007.
We have to do them separately?
I would do them separately, and would suggest you do also include first and second reading by title only.
So we do.
First and second reading by title only and emergency adoption of ordinance 2022-006.
Okay. So moved.
And I will second it.
Great. I know. That was perfect. Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Monsieur Devone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes by title only, a first and second reading by emergency, and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to change the Comprehensive Plan map designation for certain property from rural residential exception area to Bend urban growth area, and prescribing an effective date on August 19, 2022. Ordinance number 2022-006. So then, the next ordinance is in the back.
You'd want a similar motion for?
Yes.
Second reading and emergency adoption of 2022-007.
It's on page 115.
So move first and second reading of ordinance number 2022-007 and emergency adoption.
And I will second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Monsieur Devone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes on adoption by emergency, by emergency title only and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, the Deschutes County zoning map to change the zone designation for certain property from multiple-use agricultural to urbanizational area and prescribing an effective date on August 19, 2022. Ordinance number
Kyle, can you remind us, just from preliminary concepts, you know, an estimate of how many housing units we're talking about?
I believe it was in the range of three, a little over 300 housing units total, and approximately 30% of that is required via the House bill to be made affordable.
Be restricted affordable.
Correct.
That's excellent. Yeah, I mean, I, I've said this before. I think that this is a wonderful example of how we work within the state's land use planning system, and we add buildable lands, and we get the housing that our community needs.
Thank you very much.
What is the, do you have any idea when they expect to actually get these built?
That, that I don't know.
Seen anything?
So ultimately, the, the next steps in the process, on the city sides of things, other than the expansion of the UGB, is actually annexing the property into the city. And at that point, they'll be allowed to move forward with a formal application for site plan, tentative plan development. So the same thing that we would go through here to subdivide a property into specific units or parcels in this case, and then the actual site plan covers the physical side of the development. So ingress, egress, how tall is it, those, those kinds of things. I, I know that Hayden Holmes, the applicant in this case, is itching to get things on the ground and running. And so they, I think they have a very aggressive timeline to start this as soon as possible, maybe even as early as the end of the year or the beginning of next year. But I can't speak to that with any specificity.
Okay, great.
Of course.
Good news. Thank you so much, Kyle.
Have a good one, Commissioners.
Thank you for being with Deschutes County.
Yeah.
Okay, we're now up to item number 14, the Deschutes County Fee Schedule and Consideration of Board Adoption.
Here we go. Bringing all the finances together.
Okay, so acceptance of the Deschutes County Fee Schedule. Betsy Tucker brought this to the Board in about middle of May. There have been no changes except for the addition of the C-PACE fee, which I think the Board discussed in April, and that's on top of your packet that you have there. And that is the only change that we've had. So at this point in time, there needs to be, you know, a public hearing for, as state statute requires, for the county fee schedule. But as I said, there hasn't been no changes since we took this in, in middle of May.
Okay, so I need to open the public hearing?
Correct.
So, opening the public hearing, anyone in the room that wants to make a comment? Ryan, is there anyone on Zoom? No hands raised?
I, I did, when I was just reviewing it again last night, noticed that the fairgrounds, to rent the entire fairgrounds, that cost has gone up 43%. I was just wondering, do we have many people that rent it? I mean, over the year? I mean, you know, for future reference, because I was thinking, like, that's a pretty big jump.
Sure. I want to let Betsy take that.
I'm not sure what the number of people are that rent it, but I do know that the cost of renting the whole space, that opportunity cost of giving up the other rentals is kind of bundled into that increased cost. So that's the thinking behind that. Often, it sounds like when somebody rents the whole space, they're not actually using the whole space, whereas if they're just using a couple of the locations, the other locations can also be rented at the same time. So it's just trying to capture that.
Okay. I knew there had to be a good reason, but I really thought it was so significant that.
I had the same question, yes.
Yeah, like, I had to, I couldn't ignore it. It went up $7,500.
Yes.
And then the other one, the Bank of the Cascade Center, that one went up 9%, which I can understand, considering utilities and everything to run, you know, when you're inside the Bank of the Cascade, so.
Yeah, you got it.
Anyway, okay, that was my point. Any other questions or anything?
On the C-PACE fee schedule, I can, I definitely appreciate, as we are standing up a new program, we're not sure how many applications we're going to receive, that we will want to recoup our costs. But I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, farther down the line, as this program is more established, whether there, you know, we might create opportunities for, for smaller projects to come in for C-PACE financing without such a hefty fee attached to them. Because, you know, $2,500 is 1% of, what is that, $2,500,000 project? Am I getting that right?
I'm going to have to trust you on that one.
And, you know, you could imagine, you can imagine entities coming in here with a project where they, they want to finance a few hundred thousand dollars, you know, or, and we should set a minimum that, that, you know, that really does recoup our costs. But we also, hopefully, in the long run, don't want to make a, create a barrier to people doing small projects as well.
Sure, that's a good point. And I think with this being a new program, those are all things that will be at the top of mind. And then when we get together again for this process, that is something that I'm sure will be discussed to make sure that is, it is aligned with the outcomes that we're hoping to see. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I support that also, you know, as soon as we see a project or a few projects, then we'll know if we're dialed in or not. So this is a great starting point.
It's actually 250,000, 1%.
I figured you would get that.
I'm like, oh, I know.
Only that's 1% of.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, I was like thinking, oh, gosh. I know, mental math, it was my.
It may be in finance, but math in my head, that's just not something I do.
My boys could do this mental math, and I love my calculator. But I just kind of thought, what, what is it?
Thank you.
Well, it will be interesting to see, you know, what kind of projects we do.
Certainly.
We had a lot of support from the community. We had a lot of support from the community. So, are there any other comments? Did you, did you want us to go back and look at that in the future then?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, 250,000, that's not, yeah, I, I was, I lost a decimal point in my brain. Still, you could imagine people coming in with, you know, an $80,000 project or something like that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with the, this fee schedule for the, for the time being. And, you know, as the, as the program unfolds, if we have a, if we have volume and if we feel like the, the fee is a barrier to smaller projects, then I'd like us to, to evaluate that.
Thanks.
Okay, I believe I'll close the public hearing at this time. Is there any motion from the board?
I'll move approval of the Resolution 2022-032 to adopt the fiscal year 23 Deschutes County Fee Schedule.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have item number 15. Dan?
Yeah, so this is a consideration of Board Signature Resolution 2022-033, adopting the Deschutes County budget. And this is kind of a process that goes back to December, when we do the Budget Committee meeting. Just want to thank the Budget Committee themselves, through which are you, you and, of course, Jim Fister and Bruce Barrett and Judy Trejo, also on the committee, and for the time that they volunteer, our Budget Officer, Nick Leelak, departmental staff, and of course, the finance staff that worked with to put this together. So basically, the adoption, there's no changes from the proposed budget, which was approved by that Budget Committee in the last week of May there. And so there's no substantial changes to that adopted budget at this point in time. The budget you're looking at reflects all of the special requests and decision points that we made or that the committee made during that point in time that were approved. And we have a record in finance and in HR of those decision points for future use. And if you'd like to see those again at some point, we're happy to email those to you. So at this point in time, the budget is balanced. And per state statute, we have a public hearing here to, to adopt the Deschutes County budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Okay, so I'm opening up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that cares to comment? Ryan, is there anyone on Zoom with a raised hand? I thought maybe Stan would be here. Stan usually is on our audit committee and he usually participates at some point. Are there any comments? On the board?
So just big picture items, you know, we do have big capital happening at Deschutes County, so some of these things are, you know, being planned for. I know that there was a discussion about our, our general fund tax rate. It's amazing to see the assessed value go up over the years. We do need to be very, very fiscally responsible in the big picture here. Inflation is happening, interest rates are changing, this is a very dynamic year. When we see that total number of $587 million, it's really just a huge number. And in the last 10 years or so, we've seen to go from about 350 or 380 million to 580 million dollars. So a lot of money flowing, a lot of, the $38 million for ARPA has been put in here, the COVID dollars come through the state and the federal government, so a lot of moving parts. So as I say, the tax assessed value is still growing, you know, new houses, and we just approved, you know, possible 300 unit development, some affordable housing, but other market rate housing. So it's really just amazing watching the finances go over the years here. It's better to be living in a place that's growing than shrinking, probably, is, is kind of the big picture from my point of view.
We are very fortunate that we had such a surplus or unallocated amount of transient room tax to help us square up our budget for this year, so we did not have to move forward with the assessed property tax rate increase that will eventually be needed at this point in time. But, you know, we, we should definitely remark on how fortunate we are to have this incredibly robust and diverse stream of revenue sources at the moment. But also be mindful of the huge capital construction costs we have ahead of us and, and how we need to secure the revenue needed to make all those things happen.
And I would like to point out that the levy rate is going to stay at the diminished six cents off the thousand, which is $1.12183. And because people are going to get their property tax bills this fall, and they're going to see that the bills have gone up because the appreciation of your residents and all the other levies that have been, you know, passed in the county, truly with inflation being so high and every, and everyone is reminded of that truly on a daily basis. So I'm, I'm glad that we are keeping the allocation where it has been for the last several years. I feel like we, as county commissioners, need to look at what we're, our capital projects and actually look at them with a really fiscal eye. It's not our money and, you know, some things may have to be put off or maybe not make quite as expensive. But I know that in my family, if, I would hear if I was going to spend an extra $300,000 on something in relationship, I mean, I wouldn't be spending $300,000. Okay, let's say $30,000 or even $3,000, I would hear about it. And I feel like we need to treat your money just like that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really difficult times, you know. I just put gas in my, my vehicle this morning. You see it every day, and you see it when you buy food, and you see that the size is, used to be like this, and now the size is half. So is that really factored into inflation? I truly doubt that it is, when something goes from one pound to 12 ounces, you know. And I appreciate that, and I respect, people are trying to stretch their dollars right now, and, and it's, it's, it is rough. So, and thank you for the tourists that help us with our fund, because truly, those tourists, if you can believe it, are, I believe it was 22% of the car, the courthouse tickets, where 22% were from the tourists. And in the court, actual our court system, about a quarter of the trials and things that we have in Deschutes County come from our tourists. So there's like the really great side with the room tax revenue on one side, and then on the other side, you know, there is a cost, and I don't think we can ignore it. So thank you for that balance this year. So, coming out of the public hearing.
Couple other items come to mind, so we do have a sheriff's office rate that's being raised at this point, and that's rural patrol, which I'll see on my tax bill. But, I mean, being able to dial that in over time, less than the voter-approved maximum, is, is a value that not every county even has that opportunity to, to do that. When public safety is a critical need, other things in other counties have to be put on the side, and we don't have to do that here, so it's very valuable. We do represent five or six items on your tax bill, depending if you live in certain areas, but, you know, we do. There, a lot of those line items on the tax bill are going to be represented here today by our choices. And then also from the, the transient room tax, being able to celebrate the fact that Sun River was a big partner in their, their public safety facility. Transient room tax, a big check was committed to over two fiscal years, but that's revenue created by the tourist activity and a big capital project that they're able to do for their, their operations, their citizens, permanent residents, as well as tourists.
And just to speak to a couple of commissioners' points here, I'd just like to reiterate that we are still under, six cents under the ceiling for that tax rate for the county. And then also, today, we are just adopting the Deschutes County budget, which is not including our service district funds for, for the countywide and rural sheriff's office, Extension 4H, 911, and Blackbeet and Sun River, we'll be adopting those next week on the 29th, as we'll be, we have a legal timeframe that we need to get those posted out into the bulletin. And so that's when we'll be able to do those at that time.
So you're saying I, these other items, we will not be adopting today?
The other items are for the fee schedule.
Oh.
We did get those in, and so we will be able to adopt the fee schedules, but the actual budgets will, will come on the 29th.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Of course. And just to, so Dan mentioned that we're six cents below our, our, our potential maximum for assessed property tax rate. Those are the six cents that were rolled back in the, in the three to four year timeframe. And, you know, while it's, it's extremely important for us to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money, it's also very important for us to, to maintain a sense of proportion in all of this. So, I, you know, for my tax bill, that, those six cents, that those six cents of assessed rate reduction are, at this point, saving me maybe 16, 18 bucks a year. And that is costing the county $1.8 million per year that we could be accumulating to address our, our massive capital construction cost needs so that we have to borrow less money, which will cost us a lot more in the long run, especially as the interest rates are increasing. So while, you know, I appreciate the fact that we are not, we, we don't have to raise the assessed rate this year. I do think we will likely have to do that next year. And it's important for the taxpayers to understand that, you know, the, the impact on them, while not nothing, is, is not, it's, it's not tremendous either for your, your typical homeowner in Deschutes County.
Okay, we do have a tremendous amount of residents in Deschutes County that are retired and they, and I hear from a lot of them, they are, they are on fixed income. So even though perhaps social security went up this last year for the first significantly, they are still on fixed incomes, and when you look at everything else and what it's gone up, it's, you know, it's making it for difficult times. I, you know, I just had someone talk to me on Monday that was afraid they were going to lose their house. And is that, that isn't what we want happening in Deschutes County. So it's truly, it's, it's a challenging financial mix of what's going on.
Yeah, as long as we can just maintain a sense of proportion, the, the impacts of the taxes we're talking about are small. And, and people definitely need help right now, but this is, this is not the thing that is going to make or break someone's household. In this day and age, 16 or 18 bucks is probably the increment more that you're paying to fill your tank of gas one time, in comparison to a year ago.
Okay.
So the public hearing is closed?
Yes, and closing the public hearing.
So I'll make a motion then. I move to approve Resolution 2022-33, adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023, Deschutes County budget in the sum of $587,692,18, imposing and categorizing ad valorem property taxes at the rate of $1.2183 per $1,000 of assessed value and appropriating amounts set forward in the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, we're now going to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County 911. Let me open the public hearing for 911 Service District Fee Schedule and Consideration of Board Adoption. So Dan, I did have a question on this. A section one says that Exhibit A is attached.
Exhibit A not attached in your packet. I think this year we had, as opposed to attaching to every single, because we have about six of them, every single resolution, we just did one at the very beginning of the, of the packet to go through.
Fee schedules attached with the previous agenda item for each one of these?
Yes, the fee schedule will be attached to the Deschutes County adopted in the packet, and then 911 would be towards the end of that in the Service District section. We did that just to kind of save space, but next year, we're happy to attach each and every to the actual item, if that's what the board would like.
So rewind to item 14 and.
Page 208.
I, I think because we always need to follow the rules, and especially, we have a new auditor, and you're saying that this entire, page 208?
So page 208 of the fee schedule of Deschutes County includes line items for 911.
Well. Okay, I, I think we should have them attached. That's just, you know, if, if I'm approving something and it's not there.
Yeah, we made that change this year, we'll, we'll fix it next year.
Okay, all right.
So going forward, right, Deschutes County 911 will be on page 208, and then Sun River Service District will be on page 210, and the, and the rest will, and 209, Extension 4H is on 209. So we just kind of put them in one place, but I completely understand what you're saying, that you'd like to be able to see it.
You shouldn't say something and then I'm like going, where is it, you know?
Sure.
We are government and we are supposed to be transparent and, yeah, so thank you, Dan. All right, so I've opened the public hearing for 911, reconvened. So, is anyone in the room to be recognized or anyone on Zoom? No, Ryan? No one is? Okay, any comments from my fellow commissioners?
There's really, there's about just six line items, and I'm just acknowledging six line items for 911 fee schedule and dispatch reports and check processing fee for return check.
No comments.
Again, there were no changes to any of these service district fee schedules as well since we, since Betsy took these in, in middle of May to the board at that time.
And I would like to comment that I did attend the 911 meeting yesterday, and there is an outstanding recommendation over the leadership from Sarah for the last, well, last several years, and truly what a difference she has made and her team. So I just want to acknowledge Sarah Crosswhite, Chris Berry, and what they're doing to, and in these difficult times when they still are short employees. So it is a career to work at 911, truly it is a career and it's an opportunity, and you truly make a difference in people, in our communities' lives. So if you're thinking about going back to work, they've changed some of the restrictions, requirements, and now you only have to type 42 words a minute and you don't have to capitalize. So I mean, that's kind of how people, a lot of people work. And some of the other testing parameters have been a bit softened, so it's, it's an opportunity.
Is there a motion?
Move approval of Resolution Number 2022-034 to.
Can I come out of public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be sure, okay, thank you, Commissioner Chang.
To adopt the FY 2023 Deschutes County 911 Service District Fee Schedule.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so now, I'm now going to convene, leaving Sun River Service District, and now we're going to convene as the governing body of the Extension 4H County Service District. Opening up the public hearing for the 4H. Anyone in the room that would care to comment? Is there anyone on Zoom? Is Candy available or anybody like that? No? Okay, thank you, Ryan, for checking. All right, are there any comments from the commissioners?
Just acknowledge there's three line items, copy fees and a 4H center meeting room for public with various charges between 25 and $500, so that's that new, new room we have there. So just three line items.
Okay, Commissioner Chang, is there anything?
No.
I'll make a motion, move approval of Resolution 20- I'll make a motion, move approval of Resolution 2022-036, and to adopt the FY 23 Deschutes County Extension 4H District Fee Schedule.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? I just want to say how important 4H is to our entire community, what they do. We've got our county fair coming up the first week of August, and I thank them for their leadership and their inspiration to the youth of Deschutes County. Last year, our auction brought, I believe, a record 1.6 million, helping those students not only pay for their animals and their feed, but put some money in their bank for their future education or whatever they choose to do with that funding. But, you know, 4H is so important. It teaches all kinds of leadership and responsibility, and I am forever grateful that I was a 4H er for 10 years. So anyway, thank you. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you for the 4H. And Candy, I hope you know that we passed yours. Now, we are going to convene, we've left 4H, we're going to convene as the governing body of the Sun River Service District. I would like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that cares to speak, address Sun River's fee schedule? Ryan, is there anyone on Zoom? No one present to, okay. Commissioners, do you care to make any comments?
Just like the last time, looks like there's 32 line items for Sun River Service District, and this one does associate public records, but also ambulance billings and fire, life and safety inspection fees.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I know, I don't really have any comments on, on these fee schedules. I mean...
The, the last one, when we were looking at the four cent and six cent copy fees for extension, I...
It is what it is.
It's, yep.
Well, they do an amazing, they're amazing work in Deschutes County, and I'm...
Absolutely, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not questioning the, the, the work and the importance of any of these districts. I just, I, I don't have a lot to say about these minor fee schedule items.
Okay, so coming out of public, the public hearing, do we have a motion?
Move approval of Resolution Number 2022-038 to adopt the FY 2023 Sun River Service District Fee Schedule.
And I will second it.
Okay, further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes. So now we are leaving Sun River. We're now moving, what would you say, northwest over to Blackbeet Ranch? And I'm going to, we're going to reconvene as their governing body. So I would love to open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone in the room that cares to testify on Blackbeet Ranch on their fee schedule? Ryan, is there anyone on Zoom? No one, okay. Commissioners, any comments?
28 items on page 208 for Blackbeet Ranch Service District, just acknowledging where they're at.
Okay, and so I'll close the public hearing. Could we have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 2022-040 to adopt FY 2023 Blackbeet Ranch Service District Fee Schedule.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, now, we're going to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County for item number 20. Okay.
Trying to keep up with you here.
Okay, I know, this has got to be, it's not a public hearing, and...
This is consideration of Resolution Number 2022-047, increasing appropriations within the 2021, 2022 Deschutes County budget. This is kind of our end of year cleanup, where we make sure that funds have enough appropriation to cover their requirements at the end of the year for accounting purposes. On top of that, we also take a look at some of the more unanticipated expenses that we've had coming through this year. And so I would say the biggest two on this resolution are the increase in revenue that we're seeing in TRT, because attached to that revenue is, is a COVID contract, which is part of the percentage, as well as the 1%, which goes to the Fair and Expo Center. We need to increase the appropriations and recognize the revenue and the transient room tax. So that's one thing that this resolution does. The other thing, that's kind of a major unanticipated claim that we talked about in the Budget Committee week, is the Health Benefits Fund. They've had unanticipated increased claim costs and expenditures of $5.5 million, perhaps slightly under that, but again, we need to make sure that we're appropriating amount of money to cover those claim costs in this year. And as we talked about at the budget meeting, this is due to, you know, we believe pent-up kind of healthcare needs for COVID-19, but Kathleen Himmend is here if you have additional questions about...
I do, because that number has floated around. I realized that we were running an excessive reserve, what was it, like 16 million? And now we're taking, yes, we've, using it, it's really 5.5 million. Is that the closest number we are coming to at this moment in time?
Yeah, we, so we are, you know, tracking invoice by invoice at this point in terms of our claims costs. I think that we're, the last invoice came in, and that we had our projections at being 5.13 million over the budgeted amount. And that really has to do, I think Dan was right on, in that we had, we had one very high claim, claim itself, one claim that was $2 million. We do have our stop loss, and so we did receive 1.5 million reimbursement for that, right? So there, there is that piece. But we also had just a higher pent-up, you know, medical access, right? And so, so folks going in and getting that care. There is also folks who had delayed care, and so condition management, right, long-term disease management, claims were a little bit worse off than maybe they would have been. And so there was a, our actuary gave us a projected amount of maybe an increase of 8% impact on our claims. We actually saw that come in, in the first half of the year at 20%. And so that was a big, big difference there. And then the last piece of that is the reduced revenue into our, you know, lower than budgeted. And so part of that is due to our vacancies, vacancy costs being lower, we don't currently charge vacancies, it's a practice that was stopped a little while ago. And so tho, those pieces together kind of hit this trifecta, to which we just had higher-than-anticipated claims this year. And so heading, so we've, we are anticipating that that coming in at about 1, 5.13 million over, given that we could see just a spike in the claims at the very end, we've asked for appropriations to be at 5.5, just to give us that little buffer in case something does come in a little higher.
So Kathleen, the, the $2 million claim you mentioned, so will, you don't net that out within this 5.5 million?
Right, right.
So like the 2 million shows up in this 5.5 million, and then there, that, that 1.5 million will kind of replenish the fund at a later point? Is that, is that the right word?
No, no, it has. So, so what we're asking for is just the appropriation, the ability to spend beyond, right, what, what we were authorized to spend. The net is closer to about 4 million. And that, that net also takes into account the lower revenue that came in, in, in that area. So our net is closer to about 4 million over budgeted as impacting the reserves. And that brings us in a bit lower in our reserves, and I can pull up that exact number, well, our projected number. What that does...
Is that projected number then, do you mind?
Yeah, absolutely.
So 5.5 is really just that total amount that needs to go in and out, even though the, the balance won't be hit as hard because of that reimbursement?
Correct, correct.
4 million is still a lot.
Oh yeah, but just the accounting practices of showing the money flowing in and out.
From a budgetary perspective, it's, when we're doing a budget adjustment, we're showing the appropriations or the expenditures needed to cover. We can show, recognize the revenue, but because kind of projections have been volatile, we're just covering with the full appropriation of 5.5 without showing the net at this point in time.
Well, this, you know, just our Deschutes County family, you know, the employees and their families, having this kind of hit to their healthcare, you have to think that, you know, talking about it and people needing to see their doctor, the last little, you know, last couple of years, really, they weren't seeing their doctor when they should have been about other issues. So truly, I'm hoping that people catch up on their healthcare and, you know, see your physicians.
And that, that gets to, you know, kind of my, my big, kind of looking forward question, which is, I mean, do we have any ability to kind of forecast or project whether this trend will continue into the coming year? Or do we think this was just like a surge of pent-up demand and, and it'll settle, settle out going into the next year?
Sure. So we've been working with our consultants on that, our budget, I mean, our, our benefit consultants on it, and we are seeing that starting to trend down. So while we were spending, you know, our claims were coming in at about 100, you know, there's a couple of months, which was 130% of our budgeted rate, we are actually seeing that getting closer to about the 106%, which is what we anticipated, right? 104 to 106% of budget rate, knowing that we would use some of the reserve, but just not the amount of reserve that we've actually seen. So we are seeing that trending back to quote "normal." But, you know, there are going to, we do anticipate additional costs coming. So we're already seeing that trending down. What we're doing is having to ask for those additional authority to spend above because of the claims that incurred earlier. And it was definitely around the February, March, probably January as well, because, you know, claims, it takes time to bill and get to us, those claims coming in. So it really was, I think, that access at the beginning of the year to care that, you know, we saw, we saw a lot more of folks going in for some of those, not necessarily, I mean elective, yes, but even surgeries that could have just been postponed because of the access issue. So we are seeing it trending down. We do, the, the forecasting that our consultants have done and the actuary there is projecting that to come back down closer to a little bit more to normal. There are a couple of things that will impact us in the future year because of this. One will be like our stop loss rates. We anticipate those increasing, again, because we did utilize that, it's kind of one of those, if you utilize those, you know, that insurance that definitely will likely be evaluated higher. Yeah. So again, we do see it coming down, but it is an impact to our fund. And so just to get back to Commissioner Derr's question, you know, the projection right now, based on what we've got coming in, we're looking at our expenses being 5.123 million over, and our revenue being 754,000 lower than anticipated. And then with those reimbursements of the 1.5 million, we're actually appear to be netting 4.3 million over the budget. That does impact our beginning net balance for next year, and then of course impacting our reserves then at the end of FY 23 as well.
What kind of beginning net balance are we looking at?
Well, it's amazing seeing the open FTE number affect that too. And that was a policy choice to not cover that FTE if there wasn't a filled position, but struggling to get FTE in place is, is an effect also. Amazing.
My impression is that we had, we had a significant number of COVID workers' comp claims, and I'm, I'm guessing that there was, you know, Commissioner Derr expressed concern about people not going to get taken care of for a variety of things because of, because of COVID. And, you know, I, I'm actually concerned, you know, I'm, I'm curious basically how much COVID care for our employees cost us this last year or this last couple of years. I mean, do you, do you have any sense of that?
A, a little bit. I mean, a couple of comments on that. One, if it is work, workers' comp related, it isn't run through our Health Benefits Fund, right? It's run through the workers' comp program, so those numbers wouldn't be reflected in here. But there, so, but non-work related, there's definitely an impact. And there were some early numbers that were run. I don't know if I can pull them up currently, but we, again, we saw kind of a spike of those claims, and we're seeing those going down. So we did see some hospitalizations. And oftentimes, I mean, we saw some that were, were nearing our stop loss range, and we did see a hospitalization due to COVID that was near 400,000, right? And so it didn't hit that stop loss number. But I would also say that that was not common in terms of the impact of COVID. So I can find the reporting that we did on that earlier in the year and, and provide that to you all as well.
That'd be great, yeah. I mean, and not to beat a dead horse, but I, I, you know, those, those costs incurred for COVID care, I, I think potentially were preventable if we had considered doing a vaccination incentive program for the county earlier in the pandemic. And then that's something that, you know, if, you know, heaven forbid, if COVID continues and we see new variants emerge that are more severe, more severely impactful to people's health than that, the, the one that's going around that everyone has right now, that's something I think that we should keep in the back of our minds as a potential response.
It was interesting. My husband actually spent one night in ICU, and that bill was $40,000, 40,000 for one night. And I, I mean, when I got it, I was like, oh my gosh, yes. So, yes, medical care is expensive, but then on the other side of the story about the people that haven't seen their doctor, we had an architect in our office recently, she had waited, I believe it was 14 months, to get her elbow surgery done because of COVID. And, and I can imagine on a lot of cases, it's not good to postpone something like that, that long, because she kept using it, but they, it kept, and the, you know, it was hurting more, and, you know, all those, those factors that the community has dealt with. So hopefully, we will, you know, as you say, it's trending down for, you know, for our healthcare, and I, but I still know people that need to, you know, to catch up.
And if we, and if, the more we can unclog our hospital by keeping people out of the hospital with COVID through things like vaccination, the more opportunity people have to take care of their elective surgeries.
Absolutely. And preventative care, when we did look at the numbers, one of the areas, in looking at our claims over the, the past year, we did see a decrease in preventative care. And so part of the campaign that we're working on with our doc clinic and with our TPA is to really make sure folks are getting back in to that preventative care routine. Folks aren't necessarily going to go back and have two, two physical exams, right, because they missed one. So we just need them to get in and get that one so that they know where their numbers are, so that we can move forward and address the impact of delayed care.
So another item, Newbury Neighborhood Debt Service, amount 513,000. Could you just remind me, so I'm just thinking we, was that a policy choice to, I think, just close up the debt associated with that, different than last year's budget plan?
The reason this is in the resolution is because at the beginning of the year, we, we did not budget it, but we should have budgeted it. So this is a, kind of a cleanup at the end of the year. The actuals have been coming through, we've been paying off that, that debt, but we need to match that with the budget.
Okay, so this is just more of a housekeeping cleanup item for, you know, because it's debt, it's associated, we knew what the number was going to be, but this is just to make sure things are real good for the...
Mm-hmm. Everything related to debt on this is a housecleaning issue.
Dan, could you clarify, the 232,000 in transfers out to the Deschutes County Fair, now, is that funding coming from TRT?
That's correct.
Okay. So they're getting that funding and that had not been booked before?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think there was 500, well, I'm not going to do it off the top of my head, but it was over 500,000 going to COVA based on our new TRT projections coming in. And then, of course, an increase in that 1% TRT, which would be 232,000 out to Deschutes County Fair and Expo. And then as well on this is some transfers in general funds and a small transfer in TRT to cover kind of that gap between resources and requirements. And I think that's, uh, that's about it.
Okay. I'll move approval of Resolution 2022-047, increasing appropriations within the 2122 Deschutes County budget. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair, both yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dan.
We will make sure that we have that Exhibit A attached to each P schedule.
Okay. Well, I just think it's, you say it, you should have it.
Sure. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yes. You know, like it's, that's the rule. Thank you very much.
And Commissioners, if I may, Dan was very generous in thanking everybody and expressing his appreciation for the budget process. But Dan and Betsy, Dan, our Budget Officer, our Budget Manager, you really stepped up this entire budget season. We had a major transition just right, right in the middle of it. And your work and Betsy Tucker, your work, your support to all of us, to me, to the entire process is leading us to a successful conclusion. So I just really want to thank both of you on the record and express my appreciation.
There you go. Hey. Well, but thank you very much. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of, you know, processing, debate and, you know, discussion about, okay, how is this all going to fit together? Because when you're sitting down here in front of us, it's like, okay, very calm and confident. These are the numbers. This is what we do. But I'm sure there's a lot of work going in behind that. So thank you so much for what you've done. It is a huge budget, a lot of moving parts. So thank you very much. And, you know, anybody else in the office has helped also.
And see you next week.
And we'll see you for the rest, next week.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay. We are now to Item 21, Discussion of Our Landfill Site Selection Criteria. I believe I see several parties in the room that are going to join us. Thank you.
Good timing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Satola, Director of Solid Waste. And I have Tim Burnell, our incoming Director of Solid Waste, and Dwight Miller with Parametrics. First off, my apologies. Somehow I grabbed the wrong staff report and had that inserted into my submittal for this week's meeting. If you look at the agenda packet, last week's staff report was included in today's agenda. So you have the, the correct staff report in front of you? I caught up with Sharon this morning.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure now because, yeah.
We still have the one dated June 13th.
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought that was taken care of this morning here, so.
I was looking for my packet from last week. I can remember what, you know, all the little details and why you don't want to go by the airport and all those other, and, you know, all your analysis, how to keep things fair. So I do remember.
I, I'll, I'll make sure the pa, the packet, the staff board for today gets you. I apologize for that. So, so last, last Monday, we met with, with Dwight Miller and, and Tim Burnell, and we went over the, the landfill, the solid waste facility siting criteria in detail with the board. And we, we got one specific request for a change from Commissioner Chang to, to make some adjustments on the, the weight for the distance away centroid. So if you look at the attachment to your staff report for today, that, that should be the correct stat, attachment, put the highlighting on it. Yes. So if you look at the, the highlighted cells on that, that spreadsheet, that's where we made adjustments. What I did was, we, if you look at the level two weight for site characteristics and engineering, it was originally weighted at 40% and we, we took 5% out of that weight and reallocated down under operations and gave a bit more weight to the, the waste, the distance away centroid. So we, we addressed that, that particular comment that you had, had made last week. And what that did was it, it, it adjusted the weight for that, that criteria from 1.75% to 3.15%. Granted, it's, it's kind of a subtle change, but when we have 35 or 40 criteria, every change is going to be subtle, how it, how it goes across the board on that. So we did accommodate that, that, that particular request. So what we wanted to do today was return, you've, you've had a week to take a look at the, the criteria in detail and see if there's anything else on there that you would like us to, to make any adjustments on.
Just thinking about this and the fact that in 2019, I drove out to that ranch on, you know, on the east side of Deschutes County, and apparently it was Sage Grouse Ranch. But it had a, you know, and it was right off of Highway 20, et cetera. And we haven't really done anything and it's now 22, 2022. Okay. So I'm going, and we talked about it and then COVID hit, but are we, are there really 12 sites that Dwight, in your estimation, we're going to be able to pull up that actually will be, the range won't be like this one's going to get 20, 20% and this one's going to get 90, 95%? I mean, to me, I'm, I would really be shocked if you have 12 sites in Deschutes County that are going to be something that's, we can go forward with.
You know, it's, it's hard to say exactly if we will have those 12 sites or not. What we may end up with is fewer than 12 sites, but larger than what's needed. And so it could be placement within that. And I think we had that discussion a little bit last week, that there are some areas out there where you maybe there's, you know, there's two, you know, 2,500 acres of properties are kind of located, you don't need that much property. But that, you know, if you were to break it up, that could be considered three sites. But in fact, you're probably looking at it as one site and, you know, where would it best fit within that? And so, so given that you could, I mean, if we broke out those into more sites, you might end up with the 12. Since we haven't done, you know, the, that's, that screening yet down to specific sites with the, you know, considering the fatal flaw criteria and all that, it's hard to say really if, if there are those, you know, that many sites or not. And, you know, my guess is that there will be 12, many more than 12 sites, which will make it through this first screening. The thing is, is that, you know, ultimately coming down to the broad screening level, you know, after we've done the broad screening, that's where we're trying to get it down to 12. And, and I believe that we will have those 12. But like you say, there could be a fair, fair range in the scores on those.
Yes. I, I would think there would be a tremendous range because I do drive around, you know, Deschutes County a lot. And I'm just like, okay, all right. I mean, I just feel like we are, you know, we are under the pressure of finding a site because we know that there's going to be, of course, everyone's going to be involved so that, you know, it's going to be transparent. But I just, you're saying that not till next March, we're going to actually drill down to the site that we select?
So next March, we will have the shortlist of three sites.
Next March.
Yeah, that we then take into to further, further, you know, which is really the, the invasive studies. So that's, you know, the drilling and, and other work. Some of these areas may have a lot better information than, than others. And so we may actually be able to, to have a much better sense for those sites and their viability than maybe a site that's never been looked at for, you know, for rock or for other purposes, you know? Because there's other reasons people have investigated areas out there, such as for rock quarries and, and things like that in the past.
One, one other thing to think about with this, you know, I, and this is my guess on how, how this works, but I would love to, to have a clarification on that. Once this model is built, you know, and we have all these, you know, have all the spatial data for all of these, you know, all this land area within Deschutes County in the model, and we have all these criteria set up with these scores, it also, it'd probably be easy to rejigger it. If, you know, if, if we run this model, it doesn't, it only produces four sites for some reason. It, it'd probably be possible to rejigger some of the criteria and run it again fairly quickly once the thing is built. Is that?
Yeah, no, it, it, it could be. And you may determine that there's another criteria that you want to, to weigh even more just based upon, you know, further study and all that. You determine that, you know, maybe at 18, you figure, no, well, really, let's get down to this 12. Because it could go both ways on how you.
Right, right.
You bet.
So I, I mean, if, if for some reason we, you know, after that, after this first run, we only have a very small number of sites to run it again with, you know, with a re-tinkered criteria, probably, I mean, you could hopefully do that within like a few weeks or a month or something like that?
You know, one of the, one of the, one of the, the factors that we can do for reallocation, once we get through the fatal flaw analysis, those, those weightings would be, would be no longer valid once we drop those sites off. So when we have a, a list of sites that is created after we do the fatal flaw analysis, that might be a good opportunity for rejiggering even earlier on in the process as well. So I think there's opportunities to, to, to play with the, the weighting criteria as we learn more in the process and see what, what's falling out of the, on the list.
So what takes the time is building the model and then kind of, you know, fine tuning it is, is, is hopefully a fairly quick process.
That's right. And, and, you know, part of the, part of the model is that you're adding new data to it as well. And, and that's particularly the reason why we have the, that focused screening where we can go out and we can do at least some, some field recon. And then when we have the shortlist of sites and you're actually doing further recon out there, you know, and, and the soils investigations and other investigations, that's more data that's going into the model essentially. And so we're able to, to get a better idea of that. And that actually may even bring up some other areas that weren't considered. For instance, let's say we were looking at a site that had, you know, 1,200 acres and maybe all of a sudden it's like, well, maybe it should be shifted over to this other end of it instead of where we were looking originally, just because of how some of those factors worked out.
So a couple of thoughts, as I say, I, I'm, anything's possible right now, right? So this is the beginning of the process. Perimeter presentation. I was, I was thinking, you know, like when you drive down Knott Road or, you know, by the, the landfill itself now, I mean, it really looks pretty nice most of the time. So, you know, I'm just thinking that if there's industry, and, and this is an industrial use, you know, you know, hopefully just during the day and, and good conditions, whatever. But that perimeter presentation, you know, there could be a, a site that you don't even know it's there, you know, developing topography opportunities and everything. So, and I don't know how to put it in the criteria. I was just sitting here thinking of the, you know, the, the possibilities in the future. And also one of those things, kind of the low hum of industry, as in if we do a, you know, bioenergy, anything, is going to be that low hum of something off in the distance where there wasn't in the past. You know, just, you know, if I was a resident in, you know, within X amount of distance, are you going to, because I remember that was a discussion about generating electricity from landfill gas, you know, having those reciprocal engines, referring to a diesel cap motor converted, it's just kind of that low hum is out there all of a sudden. And you can design pass that, you know, put it in a insulated building or whatever that really doesn't have that exterior sound that's happening. So everything's going to be a variable right now. And I do want the community to be involved, to get engaged, understand what if, but also understand that how valuable this is going to be. Solid waste management facility, not just an open, you know, area with birds flying in circles around it. I mean, it's going to be new. It's going to be modern. It's going to be well managed. So just a couple of thoughts for you.
You know, one of your comments, the Viewshed is factored into the, the criteria. There is, there is some discussion on that. We had gotten together yesterday and we, we went out east of town a little bit, you know, the, the, the ranch out by Pine Mountain, that's, that's for sale, it's still for sale. The sign, sign was up and I went and drove by it.
Oh, I've been there.
And, you know, there, there is, there is no hiding of a facility there. Highway 20 is a little bit higher and there's a little bit of a base in between that and the foot of Pine Mountain there. So anything that would happen out there would be visible. There's just no, not a good way to view blocks and like that. And that, that will weigh into the consideration. That property will likely come up in, in the, in the process here. And that will get some, some point weighing because of that.
Well, and that's why I use the words perimeter presentation.
Yeah.
Because even if you can see over the fence and see what's happening over there, oh, it's, you know, it's a nice, you know, brick half wall with a, a fence over it, just like we have now. And it's, it's pleasing to drive by, you know? So that's exactly why I was using the words perimeter presentation.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And actually, I, I like that term. It, it, it's a, it's a good term. And I think one of the things, and back to what Chad was saying, the, the fact that we're, we're looking at, at visibility and Viewshed as part of it, but we're also looking at buffer width and buffers. And so when you have, you know, a good wide buffer out there of 500 to 1,000 feet, there's a lot that you can do within that buffer, you know, both, you know, fencing, vegetation, burming and the like, that really helps to, to screen a facility.
But then again, I think of the solar farm on Highway 97 north of Bend. And it has trees and are those trees ever?
Of course, struggling trees.
Are they ever watered? Because they are like this tall and like every third one is dead, you know? So truly, if you're going to do vegetation, then you've got to think about something that's, does it need water?
Yeah. And the, to the degree that you can use native vegetation that is successful, that's, that is preferred. I mean, just from that standpoint.
I know. Well.
And frankly, you know, if you want to, if you, if, there are a whole lot of people in, in Deschutes County who use junipers for screening their property to try to, you know, reduce their visual contact with their neighbors, who are creating a fire hazard by, by doing so. So I, veg, you know, out, out in the, in the high desert, there's not much opportunity to use vegetation for screening without creating, creating risks that, you know, unintended consequences.
I think land, landforms and certainly natural landforms are, are key to, to success on that.
Or as Commissioner DeBon was saying, build, you know, a nice, a nice stone wall or something like that. As we're, as we're talking about kind of visual impacts, it, it does occur to me that there are a whole lot of people who fly in and out of Redmond Airport, you know, to come here for their tourist, tourist experience, you know, to our, our, our community and to see, see the natural environment. Do we, do we have any concerns about, you know, from a visual perspective, you know, the, the, the new site being, you know, kind of within those flight corridors? And, and I, I mean, when you're, when you're really high up in the air, like that's one thing. But I mean, at, like, would we want to, i- is it enough of a, of a impact on a like tourist visitor experience that we would want to have some kind of buffer around the Redmond Airport? Okay. I guess it's, it's the question I, I'm trying to get at.
The, the EPA criteria will prohibit us from being within 10,000 feet of the, the Redmond Airport. So roughly two miles. As you were talking, I was reflecting if you've ever flown into Denver Airport, the, the new air, well, not so much new up here now, I was quite surprised where they actually cited it because there's a rather substantial landfill you drive right by as you go to the, the Denver Airport. I have not heard of anyone, it'd be difficult to screen an overhead view of, of a place.
Yeah. Two miles is, two miles is pretty good.
The EPA criteria will push us further out from there if there's a site anywhere near the, the, the Redmond Airport. Now, the Bend Airport, prop driven airports, it's 5,000 feet. So we're, we can get a mile closer. But I, just off the top of my head, I'm not sure if there's any viable sites. You know, it's, it's somewhat developed around the, the Bend Airport.
Yeah. And the Bend Municipal Airport, I mean, that's, I mean, the, the, the tens of thousands of visiting tourists fly into Redmond. I'm sure there's people who are coming to visit, you know, the Bend Airport, but that's okay.
Well, there's the whole flip side to that too. I mean, if it's a, a new generation's solid waste management facility recreating products from waste streams, I mean, it could be a tourist attraction in itself. And I, I mean, I went and saw H Power on Oahu and I got to go see the, you know, the, the trucks coming in, the grappler putting it into the waste stream. They're, they have five lane burner or whatever it is and the ash coming out in the bag plant for the exhaust management. I was interested in seeing that. So I mean, there's a flip side to it also.
Yes, but I'm, I'm guessing that most of the people flying into the Redmond Airport are not solid waste management site tourists.
So another thing to keep in mind too is if we're, if we're signing a. So another thing to keep in mind, too, is if we're, if we're citing a 250 acre landfill, you're not going to see 250 acres of waste on the ground. Our, our working area is typically about 10,000 square feet. So it's relatively small. And unless you know what you're looking at, you may not even notice amongst everything else that you're looking at from out the window.
I can't tell you how many times I've been in Denver and I don't think I ever noticed it, right?
It's there.
I wasn't looking for it, but yeah.
It's there, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't noticed. So I can't wait to fly there now and like, where is that landfill?
If you're coming in on the highway to the Denver Airport, it's on the north side of the highway.
It's on the north side.
And you can't miss it.
You can't, okay.
If you know what you're looking at, you can't miss it, yeah.
All right, well, usually, you know, it's exciting when you fly.
And what I was going to say is typically what you, what you look at and what you kind of see from the air or from, from farther distance is, is similar to a quarry or a gravel operation or something like that, where, you know, obviously the vegetation has been, has been cleared and all, but very little of the space that is there is actually refused that you would see. And so it's, as Chad said, it's only about 10,000 square feet, which is pretty small. And that's, that's, you know, less than a quarter acre. So it's a pretty small area out there.
And, and a two mile buffer is pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, and it's good to see you a couple of times here and then, you know, recent, future, recent past and now, pointing out that we need the community to understand that this is a big discussion. Obviously, we're trying to be very businesslike through this whole process, bringing it, making it open and available for anybody's comments. So, you know, I really support seeing you regularly, whatever steps we need to take here, making sure that, you know, citizens and the media, whoever is picking it up and sharing it with each other because it's cost effective, it's going to be the next generation, it's going to be very, you know, a point of pride that we have our waste stream figured out so well.
It's a good point.
Chad, I want to thank you for these public comments.
I was going to just touch on that.
There you go.
Right, I think those are incredibly important. And I also want to recognize Tim, the fact that he's going to be stepping in and he's part of this process. I think it's incredibly helpful for the continuity and because it is going to be a huge responsibility.
And you'll be sitting up there at the table here soon enough, right?
I have asked if he wanted to join me up, he said he wants to kind of watch and learn.
Well, anyway, just wanted to acknowledge and thank you for joining Deschutes County.
So I just wanted to touch on that handout I gave you. So a couple of these before the, the board meeting last week where we did the presentation on the siding criteria, we did do a, a public announcement, a press release that we were having these meetings and we were soliciting public comment. And we received two comments and I've kind of paraphrased them on this and addressed each of them. I, I think that the comments that, that these, that were submitted to us are being addressed in the criteria with the exception of the last one about rail. The comment was made, don't forget rail and that's, that's not a practical alternative in a, within 300 mile radius. So that one was addressed as it's just not, not practical within the county here. The other ones, looking at the Highway 97 corridor, the, looking at wildlife criteria, sage grouse was brought up specifically. We're not going to dismiss that immediately. It's, it's part of this process. We want to be very comprehensive, looking at every potential site in the county. And things like the sage grouse, we'll drop those sites off quickly in the, in the fatal flaw analysis.
So the property that I've been to then, because it is sage grouse, that's going to be dropped?
Well, there's a portion of it that is core sage grouse. There's the three levels of sage grouse habitat. And if I remember right, the, the southeast corner of that is, is core and then it progresses through the other two phases. You know, whether that will, will be the fatal flaw for it ultimately, you know, we'll, we'll see when we roll up our sleeve and start applying these criteria. Want to make it clear, you know, Dwight has made the note more than once that we have not looked, you know, we don't have a list of sites. And, you know, that site has been on my radar because the owners have actually approached us several times and the wrangler that works out there actually stopped by the office a couple of months ago. So I've looked at that site out of curiosity more than once. But that, that site may or may not be viable for the sage grouse. I made the comment, when you drive out there, it's in a basin, what we do is highly visible. Granted, all these criteria are small percentages at this stage, but if we, you know, as we get through the process and see what those impacts look like, we've, we may rejigger that, those percentages. But I wouldn't say that site's dropped off at this point because of the sage grouse exclusively.
Well, and a sage grouse buffer area may be wonderful for sage grouse habitat, you know, if it's just associated with the buffering of, of the operation, too.
Yeah, we may be, you know, cutting new ground. I'm not sure there, if there's been a project that has worked on mitigation in sage grouse. You know, this is a relatively new, critical species identified in the past few years. So I don't know if there's been a process anywhere in the county where they've looked at sage grouse.
There's not, I don't, I'm not aware of any landfill. I would waste site projects that have tried to cite in, in important sage grouse habitat and mitigated that. But there's, there's definitely been efforts around other things like energy development projects.
Sure.
You know, natural gas drilling, you know, wind turbine, you know, wind, wind energy projects sometimes. And it's not very easy to mitigate sage grouse habitat because sagebrush grows very slowly. It's not like, you know, like, you know, wetlands, you know, where you get the, you get the geology, you reconfigure the geology right and suddenly, you know, like the plants grow really, really fast. But, you know, to get mature sagebrush vegetation could take 15 years, so.
We did have those discussions in the past year and a half with the landfill siding group, the in-house team. Sage grouse was a topic of conversation more than once with Nick when he was Director of CDD and Adam Smith when he was on board as the county's land use attorney. So we had those conversations and, you know, because they're at their, the issues with sage grouse have not been fully addressed, whether that's mitigate, it can be mitigated successfully or not, you know, we'll, we'll go through that process on. And it, and again, it's, I think that if I remember right, the core sage grouse is definitely a fatal flaw.
It is fatal flaw.
Yeah, so whether we can successfully mitigate, that'll go, all get weighed in through the process here.
And my impression is the core sage grouse habitat in Deschutes County is way, way out.
It's tucked in at the toe of Pine Mountain to the east area.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 my, my impression is that there's a lech somewhere in the, you know, Brothers Milliken area. That was, so that was what I was thinking about. I mean, the, I don't think that there's lechs near Pine Mountain. But, you know, it may, may be an important habitat.
Yeah, but one other item, the, one of the commoners touched on, Forest Service and BLM, I did contact Jeff Kitchen again and I mentioned your name in my voice.
He didn't answer.
No, I mentioned your, your name in my voicemail and he called me back fairly quickly that afternoon. So thank you for that.
Who you know.
Yeah, he is assembling a packet for me to include the upper Deschutes Resource Management Plan with an updated layer with what the county's current BLM land holdings are, what the, what the BLM's current land holdings are and also identifying those sites that are on the disposal list. So I have not received that back from him yet, but we will be getting something from them and we'll have further dialogue with them once we, we get a chance to take a look at that.
I'm guessing the disposal list is going to mostly be little isolated pieces. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule out looking at other BLM land beyond, beyond that because we're, we're looking for sizable components. But, but yeah, the disposal list, that's, that is the lowest hanging fruit. It's not the only fruit, I guess.
Yeah, when I, when I spoke with Jeff and I brought up what I recall in some conversations with Tim Shimke about it, that there were some larger pieces of BLM land, but they were somewhat remote. So access is a potential issue. And one of the things that Jeff Kitchen cost me on was for some of those properties before the BLM would, would convey them to us, we would have to secure access rights. If there's private property, we would have to go across. So he said, you know, there's a number of things that we'll have to consider and weigh in and hopefully all that will be identified in this packet. And once we get that, we'll share that with parametrics and have some, some discussions internally and then with the BLM. So I think we'll give that, that fair consideration, due consideration. Yeah, the one other thing I did want to add on that is, you know, as we discussed last week, we're really looking at properties that are adjacent to BLM and other federal properties as well because that actually kind of extends your buffer, you know, from, definitely from private lands that way. So that's, that's definitely something to look at. One other thing I wanted to note, Commissioner Chang, is that I did look at our criteria. I couldn't quite remember exactly what we said for airports, but we, the highest score is one that's five miles away from, from an airport. And that's, that's due to some other FAA regulations that don't preclude a landfill, but it's just higher reporting requirements and things like that. If you're, if you're within that, you know, 10,000 feet to five miles, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, all right. I noticed we have it set up that you will not be coming back until August of '22, is that correct? This, this August or will you be seeing us next month?
Well, I, I think having conversations with Nick, if we, if there, if we feel we want to bring it back to the board, certainly if you want to get updates on our progress, we'd be more than happy to do that.
You know, six, seven weeks from now.
Right, no, I mean, August seems fine. It just said in August, so like the week after the fair, the second week in August would be good.
Sure, yeah, we should have some, some information available for you at that point.
And hopefully you'll get that information from BLM.
I would hope I get it before that.
And every time we meet, as I say, the next group of people might hear about this topic, too, because the worst thing's going to be if a resident of Deschutes County said, "I just heard about this today for the first time, why didn't you tell me?" Well, we've been trying to get the word out for years now.
We have, it was on the front page of yesterday's bulletin.
Ah, yeah.
Oh, for sure.
But it'll still happen, somebody won't know about it.
Yeah, you know, over the past two years, people are aware of it, maybe not everybody, but you know, we've done a number of calls in the office about it from, from members of the community.
Maybe the county fair, hmm.
We actually, I had a discussion with Sue Manette, our management analysis analyst, this morning. We are going to have something at the county's booth if, if nothing short of literature to hand out. We see if there's some strategic times we might want to staff it to be able to answer questions.
And it maybe could, now I'm thinking, could be, you know, just a nice presentation board or, or, you know, like a conference banner or something that says, you know, citing solid waste happening in Deschutes County, please pay attention or whatever, you know, whatever a professional message would be.
Yeah, that, that actually came up this morning, that, the whole thing about the fair and getting, getting the word out there. So, you know, we're definitely looking at that, we will participate in, too.
Excellent, sounds like a really good idea, Chad. Well, thank you for joining us Dwight, Chad and Tim for being here today. It is, it's, you know, I feel the, the pressure of the, we need to have the siding done. So I'm glad we're, we've got a plan, we've got, you know, scoring and continue on. And then we look forward to hearing you the second week of August. Surely we'll get a lot done by then.
So today, we're looking for your, your approval on this. So if, if, if there's a.
We need a motion?
Be best.
Okay, is there a motion from?
So let's acknowledge what that is then. We're talking about the criteria specifically, correct?
Correct.
And the criteria was changed from when we saw it to increase the weight of haul distance to waste centroid, correct? I mean, that, that was the driver of these change because then it affected others. Just making sure that's exactly, that's what we're voting in.
And in our motion, should we refer to a version of the site selection criteria, criteria like?
Well, the, the version you saw last week as amended with the attachment you have today.
Okay. I move approval of the landfill site selection criteria as amended, as, as discussed today to provide slightly higher weighting to haul distance to waste centroid as a criteria.
And I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of Budgets.
Thank you very much.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll just get our packet information?
I will, yeah, I have a couple of things I have to take upstairs. I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Megan or Sharon about it. I'm sure she's probably busy keeping track of this meeting, so.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks again.
All right, it looks like we're at item number 22, the D.R. Horton Sale and Purchase Agreement. Kristy, would you like to join us?
Out of executive session.
Yes. Warning for the record, Kristy Bolinger, Deschutes County Property Management. Before you, we have consideration of purchase and sale agreement with D.R. Horton, document number 2022-546 and a board order number 2022-034 to authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute documents associated with the sale and closing of county-owned property. So just a quick bit of background, last year, the board directed staff to issue an RFP to find developer to disposition and develop roughly 43 acres in the Newbury neighborhood, known as quadrants 2A and 2D. We issued the RFP in December and we received two responses on quadrant 2A and three responses on quadrant 2D. And after going through the process of an evaluation committee, presentations to the board, the board landed on awarding the contract, the purchase and sale agreement to D.R. Horton for both quadrants. So the purchase price offer is $10,070,000 for the 43 acres. You have before you the purchase and sale agreement. Once that's signed by the board, if that's what you so choose, the document will go back to D.R. Horton and it will take about two or three weeks for them to go through their internal process. And then once they sign, we'll have an executed agreement, which will start the 90-day initial due diligence process on their end. They will have the option to extend for an additional 150 days if for whatever reason they, they're, they need to do additional due diligence. And at that point, they will pay, after they finish their due diligence and issued a suitability notice to the county, then they will pay $1,007,000 in earnest money. And at that point, if they were to cancel after that point, then $100,000 of that would become non-refundable to D.R. Horton and the county would retain that. So their goal is to go vertical, though it's not as explicit in the agreement, their goal is to go vertical in a year. So they're going to be aggressive in doing their due diligence and progressing this deal forward. With that, I'll pause and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Kristy? Kristy, when you say go vertical, what does that mean?
Um, so horizontal would be like the infrastructure, water, sewer and whatnot. And going vertical would actually be building the single-family homes.
Okay. And we're talking about what originally they were projecting, proposing to do, what, 190?
190 is their projection. They still need to go through their, you know, the, the process with the city of Lapine since they are the jurisdiction for the Newbury neighborhood. But their tentative plan is for 190 units. And then backing up a little, if for some reason they came back and said they could only do, you know, a lot less or they came back and asked for a reduction in the, in the sales price, then the county would have the option to terminate the transaction. So there is, there is some latitude there for us.
Well, I know this purchase and sale agreement has consumed a lot of time for our, your team and our legal and I so appreciate it. And I, I know that Lapine will have a lot of work to do with this project, so the city. But, you know, housing is so critical.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on, on, on this agreement. And I do hope that this, this project moves forward and that the sale moves forward as, as we anticipate it will. And it will generate millions of dollars for the Groundwear Protection Fund in South County and it will provide much-needed housing in our community.
Thank you, it's definitely been a group effort, you know, between the board, county council, admin, CDD, the city, property management. So we're happy to have it at this point for sure.
Yes, we are, we are happy to see it today. Are there any other questions, discussion? I believe we need, do we need two separate motions?
I'd recommend that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move approval of document number 2022-546, a purchase and sale agreement with D.R. Horton for property within the Newbury neighborhood.
Okay. And I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
No.
And the Chair of the House, yes.
Ready for the next motion?
Yes.
Okay. Move approval of Board Order 2022-034 to authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute documents associated with the sale and closing of county-owned property.
Okay, and I will also second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
No.
And the Chair of the House, yes. So Kristi, we're therefore, I believe, both of the motions have been successful and we're, at least we are a bit closer than we were yesterday. So this is, I truly thank you to you and Deb and the entire team at Deschutes County. When you see what's happening in Morro County with their groundwater situation, the fact that the DEQ just raised the fine to 2.1 million and the nitrites in that, you know, it's totally a different situation. But to think that this sale could actually give a significant amount of funding for groundwater protection in South County, I think is really critical at this moment in time. So I'm glad that we're able to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Darren. Just to share with the board, of course, we'll come back and provide updates as we go through the due diligence process with D.R. Horton.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we happen to now be at item number 23, consideration of request from Mount Bachelor, grant application for the biomass district heating project. Nick, your name is on this.
Thank you, Commissioners. And we have Matt here with us that can help summarize Mount Bachelor's proposal. And he can also just share with us some of the elements to make for a smooth transition from Mount Bachelor's request. And the county is the one that officially applies to the Oregon Department of Energy for the grant. So chair if I may, I'll turn it over to Matt for comments that he may choose to share with us.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on our request for the county to apply for the Oregon Department of Energy grant for the biomass district heating project. And one question that we did have was, does the county expect to work with other public bodies when applying for other grants for the Oregon Department of Energy?
Do we expect to?
Other public bodies, meaning?
Meaning Forest Service bodies specifically or other public bodies applying for other grants within some of the other projects that you may be applying for?
I'm not sure that we're applying on behalf of anybody else, but we intend to come back next week to the Board of Commissioners and seek approval to apply for some grants on behalf of Deschutes County, of our own projects.
Yes, okay, cool. And that was what I was trying to follow up on was just, are there other public bodies involved with those other projects, I guess? I'm sorry if my question is unclear.
Are we going to be competing against ourselves?
Well, there's that, but also I think Matt is asking, who are our partners for other projects?
Correct, yes. So like, do the other projects that you'll be discussing next week directly work with, for instance, the Forest Service? Just trying to sort through if there's, okay.
Not that I know of. Yeah, I, you know, our facilities and our facility staff have probably three or four projects in mind. I'm guessing that we wouldn't submit more than, you know, two or, including this one, three tops. And I'm actually, I can't remember what the second, the second one, you know, the kind of the second priority one is at the moment. But, you know, the first priority one is, would be a project at the fairgrounds. And that is while the Fair and Expo Center has kind of an additional board, it is a county facility and that is all considered, you know, part of Deschutes County government. So we would be applying on our own behalf for that, for that facility. There might be letters of support, for example, because the concept there is solar panels on one of the buildings to increase the usefulness of the fairgrounds as basically an evacuation center for people who are, you know, trying to flee from, you know, wildfires or a cascade earthquake event or something like that. And the solar power would, you know, not only, not only kind of charge batteries, so there would be backup power there, but it might also be tied to a water, expanded well system at the fairgrounds to increase the water reliability of that site. But I mean, there might be a number of entities that are supportive of making that facility a better emergency evacuation site. But it's still, it's our property and we would be, we would pretty much just be applying as Deschutes County.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, kind of in terms of the competitive dynamics, it is, it is a little bit challenging for us to have projects, you know, of the counties in this pool and then also to kind of, to act as the applicant and fiscal sponsor for, you know, another, you know, a project that is being put forward by another entity, you know, a partner, a really good partner. But my hope is that because these two projects are really different, you know, one is biomass thermal energy, another one is solar photovoltaic power generation, that the reviewers at the Community Renewable Energy Program will just kind of look at them as apples and oranges and put them in separate, separate competitive pools.
Thank you. And that's what I believe Mount Bachelor and Wisewood would agree with and hope for as well.
So Dave, did you, is your stamp on this somewhere?
I did review the documentation. I provided Nick a response memo. Legal has no concerns. There's some administrative obligation and requirement that would fall under Nick's umbrella, but as a document, we approved it as the form, yes.
Okay.
And if I recall correctly, Mount Bachelor's, including in the grant proposal, administrative costs for Deschutes County?
Correct.
Like 20,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, Matt, nice to meet you. I'm Tony. I'm excited about, you know, partnering and filling out this application. You know, the vision of being able to drop those rough chips on the ground up there and make heat all winter is very exciting. So offsetting propane is, seems to be so tangible in our world right now because think about how it gets here. You know, rail transferred to a tank, transferred to a truck, transferred up there into another tank. So let's see what we can do here. You're asking your question about if, are you worried about too many people applying to the funds? Or what's the mindset?
No, so that question was primarily just to make sure that there wasn't a conflicting interest from like the Forest Service and just ensuring that any other public bodies could be documented when we're filling out the application process.
And this is, yeah, to the State Department of Energy Grant Program?
Correct.
There's only 12 million available. Is that right?
I believe...
On 1.3, it says the department has 12 million in grant funds available for four open room.
Yes, yes.
So there's only 12 million. So I've seen how grant funding goes in this state because I just fought for grant funding for our region in Connect, Oregon. And yes, you want to get your application in with a lot of stars on it so that, you know, you get selected. I mean, truly, I can imagine that there's probably going to be, what? 50 applications or something? I mean, it's going to be incredibly competitive to get a million dollars.
Yes.
There are, yeah, and...
I mean, do we know how many people have applied? Is that public knowledge?
I do not know those numbers off.
Right.
So I sit on the advisory board for the Community Renewable Energy Program and there will be a lot of applications. I can't tell you how many yet, but there will be a lot. I met a couple, you know, one of the other projects that I'm tracking that I think is probably going to be very competitive coming out of this region is from the Redmond Airport. That will also be a solar PV installation. And it has, you know, they have some resiliency angles to play with that as well. But it's also quite possible that this will be the least competitive cycle because the program is new. So it's a good one to get in, to get in on. And just kind of for the longer-term, bigger picture, there's a total of $50 million available through the Community Renewable Energy Program over the next, over a four-year period. And so they, they could decide to distribute that out, 12 million a year for four years or based on the demand that is evidenced by this, this cycle, they could decide to accelerate that and, you know, forward, you know, front forward those funds within that four-year period.
Matt, I realize you don't, you don't need to bring junipers up there, but one of my personal pet projects at this moment in time is that Deschutes County needs to get rid of a lot of our junipers because they are sucking up 30 to 50 gallons a day. So I know you don't need them up there, but I'm hoping that you can, you know, we can be successful for your project.
Juniper chips will burn good, wouldn't they?
Yes, they will.
Yeah, they would, wouldn't they? I mean...
There'll be, there'll be thousands of acres of treatments on federal land, much, much closer.
I know, I know, it's a close thing. But, you know, if your project is successful, maybe we can, you know, see the opportunity duplicated somewhere else.
So it's kind of a random thought, but I mean, a diesel truck and a diesel-driven chipper is going to be important here. So as I say, when we talk about environmentalism and wanting to do good things out there, we still need to have big trucks doing big work and diesels. We should always be thumbs up on diesels, what I'm trying to say there, so.
Yes, definitely. We plan to do a study on what that sort of consumption is this summer with some chipping projects that we plan on doing to pad the ski runs. And then also, yeah, we're hopeful that this current projection of about 713 metric tons would be a tangible offset for us.
So when you say chipping projects that we're doing, are you referring to the federal leasing of Mount Bachelor Powder Corporation? You're saying, who's we doing chipping projects?
There's a proposal to chip, chip some of the removed material for Forest Service land to pad ski runs and hopefully get a better calculation of what we would be looking at from a fuel consumption standpoint when we're moving this material around.
The Mount Bachelor, though, you, you know, the operator of the resort. That's what I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
And kind of, you know, to kind of expand on thinking about diesel, I mean, the whole intention of this, you know, one of the, one of the primary goals of this project is to reduce consumption of fossil, fossil fuel. Propane up until very recently was primarily produced from petroleum. So offsetting a massive amount of propane use at Mount Bachelor through use of locally generated wood fuels that were going, are going to be burned in smoldering piles in the woods, if not burned in this biomass boiler, is a huge benefit in terms of reduction of petroleum and other fossil fuel products. So hopefully that helps to make the diesel more available that's needed to run the equipment.
There we go. Well, I'm excited to partner with you on this, Senator. Just to show him.
I think the only other things that would be outstanding would, we would just need written authorization that you are, or that the county will submit on behalf of Mount Bachelor for the Oregon Department of Energy grant and that there would be an authorized representative for that with contact info. And then I would proceed to ask the question if the county would prefer for the contact for the applicant, for the application, be someone from Wisewood or from Mount Bachelor or if it would be the authorized representative themselves to answer questions about the project.
On that last item, do you think it affects the competitiveness of your proposal in any way, listing one entity versus another?
I think for the last item, we would, it would be less of a burden on the county for someone from Wisewood that's more integrated into the project to be able to answer questions about the project rather than the authorized representatives.
I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, I mean, we want, you know, we want to support Mount Bachelor in putting forward this proposal and whatever makes, whatever makes your project the most competitive, I think is, you know, is what I would like, I would want us to do. So if you don't think it matters, then I'm supportive of that as well. Dave, is there, so that this written authorization, do you have recommendations on what that looks like?
It could be an email from Nick, I would suspect. I think they just want some level of confirmation since we're coming down to the deadline that the county is going to put in the application for them.
Right.
That'd be my assumption. I mean, it's going to be the board action today. There'll be a formal motion. But you could certainly send a confirming email if that helps on the, on Mount Bachelor's end.
And Deschutes County's in for a million dollars already anyways. So we're here.
Absolutely.
And then initially it would be minutes. I mean, but initially it would be the email.
Yep.
And do we have a new projection of what this is actually totally going to cost?
We have a current estimate of what it's going to cost, but Wisewood and our partners are currently getting new bids in from various contractors to confirm that estimate.
Okay.
And we feel confident that if we can get 50% funding that we would be able to go to capital expense after that, corporate capital expense.
So you don't want to say the estimate today because it's not confirmed?
Correct.
Okay, well...
Good answer. It's changing.
Yeah, with cost escalation on construction projects all over the place, just...
Very volatile.
Yeah.
So I'll...
Is there a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, figure out. So I'll move to support Mount Bachelor Ski Resort by having Deschutes County sponsor a grant application to the Oregon Department of Energy for a Community Renewable Energy Grant Program in support of the Mount Bachelor biomass heating project. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so according to our schedule, we now have a lunch recess and we will reconvene then at 1:00.
Sure. Get that clock back up there. I keep looking for it.
Oh, yes, okay.
Unless you want to try to...
Well, there's a couple of executive sessions that we need people for, right?
Yeah, I know Kristi's here, but the other, I don't...
That's about 1:00.
It's 1:00, okay, Kristi? Okay.
At least your office is closed.
All right.
We'll reconvene.
Yeah, I would guess conceivably, they didn't have an exact number at this moment, but I would guess that those two projects, just those two properties are potentially saving something in the range of 100 acre feet of water a year. So some really exciting opportunities there. We're glad we're part of that work. And then last night, after the Sisters Vision Implementation Team meeting that I believe all of us were there to visit for, I went to the Ben Chamber of Commerce's Mid-Market Housing Forum and heard about some really interesting employer-sponsored housing initiatives. heard about some really interesting employer-sponsored housing initiatives for workforce, and also about just some, a broad range of, of policy ideas that the Chamber is gathering together to present to the community.
Okay. So, I think we're probably good to go. Are we ready then to go to anything else from Nick or Dave? No? So, we're ready to go to executive then? So, executive, we'll...